Well, let's get Mike Hansen elected county commissioner.
Yes ma'am, I agree with that and we're gonna do our best.
Sure will.
And we gotta thank you for all you've done too.
Oh, well thanks. It's a pleasure.
Thank you ma'am. And you are?
I'm Ray Bowman, of Georgetown.
We appreciate all you do.
Coming down to help out.
Yeah, sure. Thank you sir.
Those kinda just flow out. Look what happened to me. I need surgery.
I know.
Do you surgery on me? I've only asked for plastic surgery and they wouldn't wanna do it.
Send more pizza! Rusty Fields and Mary Poop.
Yes.
And proud to be here to endorse the candidacy of Mike Hansen for county commissioner. It's about time.
Yeah!
Good job.
Not him either. They would love to have him. Witnesses in my favor. I said I didn't have to listen. You could've been there but you didn't. You're not gonna be there as a witness.
I'm sorry.
Well, we're all one group.
Too bad, you're on anyway. Hey ma'am, ma'am. You're out in public and good to see you.
I just got through eating a whole bunch of food today.
It's good to see you anyway.
I'd say you too.
I was uh...
Yeah, she was telling me we couldn't hook up because you'd be home any minute. And you got a big uh...
Yeah, I was coming fast.
Here and you guys in the core of a group that can help us get him elected and actually stop this massive police state takeover that we've been witnessing here in just the last few months in light of the tragedy of September 11th and now all of the anthrax outbreaks. How many of you knew that the 4th Amendment got abolished 6 days ago, Friday before last? And then it's not sunsetted for 5 years like you heard on the news. Section 213, it's not sunsetted. So there's more propaganda out there, but the good news is 8 years ago when I started ranting and raving about this stuff, about half the people thought that we were kooks. But now, I can't find really anybody that disagrees with us because they've seen too much of the evidence come out into the open. They've seen the documentation. So the key here is wake people up now. Tell them what's gonna happen in the future. That way we gain more credibility. And then as powerful forces try to use these crises to enslave the common man or woman, they will remember what we said and be able to counter it. That is so incredibly important. Now, the Howard McLaughlin Group's gonna be playing here in about 20, 30 minutes. We're gonna have some other great speakers for you tonight. Our first speaker this evening is Don Laux. And he's the first Republican county commissioner to be elected in the history of Bastrop County out there. Well-known for its corruption. He went through a lot of grief, threats you name it, to get elected. But he's been doing a great job and rounding out a lot of the corruption. It's great to have Don Laux here who's come out to our big 2nd Amendment rallies at the Capitol that many of you attended. The people like Senator Bob Smith in the years past have been to, Ron Paul this year, former state senator Jerry Patterson, 2nd Amendment sisters. It's great to have these incredible Americans here supporting Mike Hansen in his run for county commissioner. It's so important to get everybody registered to vote and to get out there early next year when the election comes up and to get Mike in place. Don Laux County Commissioner, Republican out in Bastrop. Thanks for joining us tonight here sir. Don Laux, ladies and gentlemen.
I love short people. Good evening Texans. Where uh...Mike, where are ya? You didn't hear? Sound off. If you can hear me, I just want you to know, you gotta be outta your friggin' mind running for office. I served 22 years as a fighter pilot in the Air Force and I loved every minute of it. I get the question all the time, you know, why, do you enjoy what you're doing? Do you enjoy being the county commissioner? By the way, I'm the first Republican ever elected in Bastrop County. And I say, "Yeah, I really enjoy it. I love working with my crew and my constituents and representing the people in Bastrop County and being conservative, a constitutionalist, and an Americanist on the Commissioners Court." But then, you know, I have to think to myself, "Why isn't I doing this? What do I enjoy about it?" Well, remember, I flew fighters for 22 years in the Air Force and I lived my dream. From the time I was 5 years old, all I wanted to do was fly fighters and I got to do it. And I really enjoyed it. So when people ask me that question, I say, "Yeah, I enjoy it. I like all the things that I just mentioned." But you know what? Politics is the next best thing to air-to-air combat. We had a funny thing happen. I went deer hunting. Exercising my birthright and my constitutional rights. I didn't see a deer. They were exercising their right not to be shot. But a bunch of us got together afterwards, a bunch of politicians. None of them from my county, just from other counties. County commissioners, county judges. And we're talking back and forth as politicians do. And the subject got around to environmentalists. And the subject got around to Travis County. And these guys were talking about their dealings with the Commissioners Court in Travis County. And they said, "You know, they're really hard to deal with." And they said, "Well, Don, do you know this, who is that young guy on the Commissioners Court?" I said, "Well, that's Todd Baxter." They said, "Well, you know, he's really, he's the only one that seems to be rational and easy to deal with." And I said, "That's because he's the Republican!" And I uh...well, I was, they got the point there because he was the only one who's rational and easy to deal with. Now, the guy that said that was a lifelong Democrat and he felt a little bit embarrassed about it. But the fact is, it's true. What's happening here in Travis County, you look at what Todd Baxter does and you look at what Mike Hansen will do. And that is brings irrationality to county government. What surprised me about being in Bastrop County and being on the Commissioners Court is that there's a lot of stuff happens on a local level that's not rational. That's emotional, that's the way they've always done it. And they've done it that way because they've always done it that way. You get someone new on the court, you get someone from a different perspective. You get someone who knows more about what's going on in this world, not just in this county, not just in this state, not just in this nation. But what's going on with the UN and all the evil forces at play. And it changes things. People get educated. And people read. It takes being elected to public office to gain that credibility. And Mike, you're gonna lend a lot of credibility to that office and you're gonna teach people. And they're not gonna wanna learn right at first. But when they learn and they understand what the truth is, then we'll start making progress. I just hope it's not too late. It's up to all of us. It's up to all of us to take hold of our lives with both hands and take control of our destinies. And right now, as I see it, that means getting involved politically. Now, I don't know how many of you run for office before. My run this last year was my 3rd. I'd been beaten the first 2 times. And I'm really pleased I made it. I won by 11 votes out of 5200 votes. And what I had to do to get elected is I campaigned for 15 months. And between Labor Day and Election Day last year, I visited over 2800 homes personally. I didn't know there were that many in my precinct. But you're gonna find out, Mike. And everyone in this room had better find out. Because what it's gonna take to win this election for Mike is for each of us in this room to work hard. And that means going out and going door-to-door and meeting people, running the voter lists, getting a walk list together so you don't waste your time, and meeting on doors. You've gotta do it that way. And just to show how much of an effect I've had on people, my wife Spitfire, also known as Sarah, is gonna run for office in Bastrop County. She's running for district clerk. She's a co-reporter. She's seen how the district clerk's office works and she's not happy with it. And she made her own decision that she would run for office because it was the right thing to do. And that's what all of us in this room have to do folks. If you can't run for office, if you don't have the wherewithal, then for God's sake, help someone like Mike Hansen, help the other good people in this county running for office to get in so our words get out. We are the opinion makers. We are the ones people listen to. And it's gonna take all that work, time and money to make it happen, but it'll be worth it. God bless you and God bless Texas. And God bless you Mike for running.
Well, Don's taking me down off the podium. I like to be like the county commissioners up here by everybody. No, seriously, this is just fantastic. And what he's talking about is absolutely key. All of you should be running for some type of political office. Just showing up for the fight is the most important thing. And I don't care if you run as a Democrat or a Republican or as a Libertarian. The key is get elected, read that Constitution, that Bill of Rights, and enforce it. Because it's die! Now, that's what makes America, America. Is that people are willing to stand up and fight for their rights, their liberties, their freedoms, their heritage. This country isn't perfect, but it's the best place on the planet. And we're losing those freedoms. And it's not just incremental anymore. It's moving faster and faster and faster and faster. The society is disintegrating. So now it's time to get out of the bleachers and actually get down there in the field, on the field, on the gridiron, and get involved in that fight. Mark Twain said it best, "In the beginning, a patriot is a scarce man, hated and feared. But in time when his cause succeeds, the timid join him, or then it costs nothing to be a patriot." The storm's coming, it's already here. And it's people that care and want freedom. So join it now. Don't wait. Be part of history. 1776, all over again! But there's another storm coming and it's tyranny. And it knows that. And understands that the developments in technology are like a gun or any other tool. They're a double-edged sword. They can be used for good or evil. And the elite knows this technology in the hands of 6 billion humans on this planet will defeat their monopoly of power. And that their psychological phony reality, this matrix-like system you see being broadcast on the nightly news is threatened. And people are tuning out of the mainstream news in droves. And they're finding out about the Bill of Rights and the Constitution and human histories. And they're finding out who's running their lives and who hates them and who has sworn to destroy them. And it's called the New World Order! Now, are you gonna defeat the New World Order? Because you have the power to do it. You have to seize control of that system, that double-edged sword system of technology. And you have to do it now. You have to use it in the system to defeat it. So what I'm saying here is it's important whether you're a Republican or a Democrat or a Libertarian to get into the system and to fight within the system as well as without the system, outside of it, at every level for freedom and liberty. Now, the band's coming up here in just a few minutes, but I wanted to bring up Mr. Bagnaric, Michael Bagnaric. He's a great Libertarian here in town, goes around teaching constitutional classes. He has a good chance of winning, running for state representative. Michael Bagnaric, I really appreciate all your support for the people's rights and fighting so long and so hard. God bless you, Michael Bagnaric. Come on up.
Well, I'm proud and honored to have been invited here to speak to all of you. And I am here to support Mike Hansen. I've known Mike for several years now. And one of the reasons that I support Michael is that he understands the fundamental difference between rights and privileges. Now, I teach an 8-hour class on the Constitution. I'm just gonna give you about 5 minutes here. A right is something that you don't have to ask permission for. You're born with it. It's inherent in you. A privilege is something that a person of higher authority grants to you. Let me give you an example. If I walk out of the back of my house onto my land, I can walk back and forth, back and forth across my land all afternoon. And I don't have to ask anybody. It's because I have a right to walk back and forth across my land. Now, if I wanna walk to the store which happens to be on the other side of your land, do I have the right to walk back and forth and back and forth across your land anytime I want? No. If I wanna walk across your land, it is a privilege. On Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, you can say, "Sure, Mike, we're neighbors, we're good buddies. Feel free, walk across my land." On Thursday morning, you can wake up in a bad mood and for whatever reason, you can say, "No, you can't walk around. You can't walk across. You gotta walk around." So the important issue here is that a privilege is something that is granted to you and it can be revoked at any time. Rights and privileges are opposites. Mike Hansen knows the difference. And he is willing to get into office and fight for your rights, even if you're not real clear on what they are. Now, county commissioner position is a very important position because they decide what the budget is and they decide which agency or which group is going to get money. And it suddenly occurred to us not too long ago that if we get in on the Commissioners Court, we can just turn off the money for all the organizations that are violating your rights. I used to work in a refinery many years ago. And one of the things they taught me is that if you have an oil fire, you have some pipe that's spitting out fuel and it's on fire, it's a very, very hot and dangerous fire. You can take hoses and water and spray water on that fire all afternoon and it probably is not gonna go out. All you have to do however, is walk over to the pipe where the valve is, turn the valve off, and the fire goes out. You don't even have to spray any water. And that's the position that we are gonna be putting Mike Hansen in. When he is on the Commissioners Court, he's gonna be in a position to turn off the valve to all those organizations that are violating your rights. Now, I have a little editorial that I submitted to the paper. It talks about liberty. And I'm gonna take the luxury of reading this here to you. It'll only be a couple minutes. "Give me liberty or give me death." Every American over the age of 12 is familiar with this famous quote. Almost everyone knows that these words were uttered by Patrick Henry. Sadly, except for this famous phrase, less than 1 in 10,000 can even recall a single sentence from this passionate speech. This is not surprising then, that very few people understand the implication of this bold declaration. That's because Americans have developed a bad habit of making decisions before they've identified all of their options. For example, people often ask if I'm a Republican or a Democrat. They are often shocked when I respond, "Neither." They never consider the possibility that I might be a Libertarian or a Green or an Independent. They automatically presume that I belong to one of the larger parties. Sometimes, we omit possible options because they are simply unacceptable. If a husband and wife are watching television, the husband may browse the TV guide and ask his better half if she wants to watch football or hockey. Never breathing a word that the Bolshoi Ballet is currently on PBS. Clearly, watching people prance around in tights is not an option in this household. That was a technique that Patrick Henry was using. As he saw it, there were 3 options. 1, live freely, exercising your unalienable rights. 2, die fighting for those rights. 3, submit to British tyranny and live as a slave or subject of the king. As far as Patrick Henry was concerned, living as a slave to the king was even less desirable than the Volshoi would be to the armchair quarterback mentioned above. Now, the United States suffered a terrible tragedy on September 11th. We lost several people in New York. And even worse tragedy is what the United States government is trying to do to us. They are trying to violate your rights or get you to give up your rights because you don't understand the difference between, you know, liberty and slavery. What they are trying to do tactically is to give you only some of the options. You know, and a choice between the electric chair and lethal injection is not much of an option. So please, pay attention to what's going on in Washington. Don't let the politicians pull a fast one on you by giving you only some of the options. And, all politics is local. We can make a difference right here in Austin. And we can do that by helping Mike Hansen get elected to county commissioner. I fully support Mike. I hope that you will support him both emotionally and financially. It takes a lot of money to win an office like this. So dig deep and help Mike Hansen get into the county commissioner seat. Thank you very much.
The Howard McLaughlin Group's coming up and you do not wanna miss it. But one more speaker before we go to the band, then in about 45 minutes, we'll have some other great speeches for you. And that's Mike Hansen, your candidate for county commissioner precinct 4. Mike Hansen, come on down. And remember, in this whole election, it's very important to watch the county clerk, Dan DeNoubois, who got caught stealing the election for Karen Sunlightner in 1998. That was even in the paper. Double counting ballots, stuffing ballot boxes, breaking safety seals, and falsifying signatures. So remember, we need to get everybody to vote so there's so many votes in there that she and her little cronies can't stuff enough ballot boxes to counter what we're doing here. God bless you all for being here. Here's Mike Hansen.
Thank you Alex. Before we get started, I wanna thank everybody that came out to the support dinner and the people that cooked the dinner. And I know she looks like my sister, but I wanna, we have somebody special here tonight. It's my mother, Joy Hansen. Can she stand up? It's all her fault folks, right there. It's all her fault. Just wanna tell everybody, we're just getting started in this election. The primaries are gonna be March 12th. And we need to get everybody signed up in South Austin to vote. And early voting's gonna be February 23rd through March 8th. And so far, there's nobody running against me.
Who dares?
Yeah. With Alex, who dares? But, and the real challenge is gonna be November 5th of 2002 when we have to run against Margaret Gomez. So we need all your support. Anything you can do. Call us on the comment line. I have cards back there with my cellphone, my home number and my office number. Anything you can do. And we have Lisa Smith. Can she stand up, Lisa? Okay, if we could get your email, instead of calling you, we could probably email you the information. And we sure appreciate y'all and anything you can do to help us get the platform together. We're just starting. We're gonna get a website. And we got a lot to do before the primaries on March 12th. So God bless y'all and thanks for coming.
Certainly was wrong. Well, there is George Pulliam. And I just wanna bring George up for just a second. Because I never get a chance to talk to George. I'm on the radio 6 hours a day and doing all this other stuff. And just real briefly, I wanted to bring George up here and thank you for all he's done. He also helped us build a new house for a WWII veteran who was also a nuclear test subject. Joe Campana, the city was gonna bulldoze that, his house. We got in their face, built him a new house, and they got in the news and said it was alright to build him a new house. No, this is the guy that made it all possible with your help. Come on over here George, just real quick before the great band gets going.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. I wanna make sure that everyone, y'all, thank you, thank you. I wanna make sure that everyone, y'all, to get out and vote if you're in this precinct. Get out the vote. You need to get at least 5 other people to get out the vote. Because we need to get someone good like Mike Hansen in. Is that right? Alright, thank you. I guess the drummers out there with the amplifiers got it set to 11.
Alright, here we go ladies and gentlemen. As usual, the drummer is missing. Drummers are always the troublemakers, aren't they? I'm just teasing you. This is gonna be good folks, get ready for it. Country, you know a lot of bad stuff's happening. They abolished the 4th Amendment last week. Well, it starts locally with community leaders that won't put up with it. That's why we're here tonight for Mike Hansen. And again, there's more details on his campaign. It'll be posted daily at infowars.com. Without further ado, ladies and gentlemen. Hey bub, what's going on? Alright, again, ladies and gentlemen. And look at this crowd. We got people of all ages, colors, you name it, who want freedom. Now, the media and the name of the entity is always trying to divide people. But I just love it that true Americans of every, you know, race, color, creed, region, want freedom. And not just in America, people everywhere want freedom. And they're demanding it. But they're gonna have to get involved to get it. That's the bottom line in history. Alright, again, just in a few minutes, the band will be going. Thanks for joining us.
This is Money is All Gold to Mike Hansen's campaign. We're starting early. We need money. Please. If you put in a 5 or a 10, it's not gonna hurt you, man. Just think, we're getting somebody in office that we need. We cannot say jack if we do not have people in office that work for us. We cannot. It will be that way, and Austin will not be that way if we vote right. If we vote right. Damn, I didn't even drink with them tonight. If we vote right, we will, we will win, man, if we vote right. We gotta vote for the people, for the people. We own this city. The Austin State's won and the police department and the White House and all that stuff. They do not own this city. We own this city. We all do, even them. They're just too much claim of it as us. There's no violence in this situation. There's to be no violence whatsoever. This is a peaceful, very peaceful demonstration against our amendments and our rights. Plus, who in the hell wants Mike Hansen for county commissioner? Alright, that's all we're really caring about. That's the main thing. Right now, that's all we got to do is get that number 1 first. Let's get him county commissioner and let's go all the way with it. This is one of many, many benefits we're gonna do. So any dollar or anything you can put in the jar, hey, what's a 10, what's a 20? I mean, you know, you're getting somebody in office that's gonna do something finally. And anyway, we're glad to be a part of it. God bless, thank you.
I don't even know the words, goddammit, it's the blues! I don't know where my hand's going. It's just going.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Hey, quit schmoozing with all these women around here.
Hi, I'm just naturally soaking liquor to these women while I schmooze with them.
Yeah, right, they must be drunk.
Let's go see who else I can schmooze with.
Oh, this is a shot of us?
Yeah.
Aw! Nice show, man. Come on, Melissa, you getting here too? Where the groupies? Where the groupies at a Jeff Davis show?
Oh, Jeff Davis got groupies?
Yeah!
My god, there you got it, folks. How about a...
Yeah, we love the Trailer Park Show.
Love them all, love them all.
Love all the shows, man.
Jeff Davis ain't gonna say, no?
Oh, you love the Trailer Park Show.
Love Trailer Park Show, yeah, we love the Trailer Park Show.
All at one time now.
One, two, three. We love the Trailer Park Show!
Look at this, this is the first time I've met this woman in person.
Oh, yeah, Esther?
She's my sister.
Oh, your sister?
She's my sister.
I go again?
Melissa, I don't wanna be on TV, I'm very shy. I am, I'm really believe it or not.
As God bless the Republic, and as God bless the Republic, death to the damn New World Order!
Peace and freedom, let's legalize it once again.
Okay. Oh, yeah, you finally getting a copy of Common Sense?
Yeah, I hit him up for one.
George, I wonder, 'cause Rusty keeps coming over here with all these pretty women, and I was beginning to wonder what the hell's going on.
He's the luckiest boy in the world!
Yeah, I'm gonna come here and take some lessons, you know?
You never know what might happen out behind the South Austin bar.
Yeah, the South Austin bar, huh? Okay.
Well, that figures, that would be just my luck.
Good, I can't even sell you up to the highest bidder. Like a hooker on a finger, you can't shake loose.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Eleven days equals twenty-six years.
Esther works on a TV crew.
Esther does?
Yeah, she does. She's very valuable to us at the Trailer Park Show. Yeah, she is. Whether she likes it or not. It's the way to get it. Feed to your face. What else do you expect from the Trailer Park Show but feed to your face? Hello, folks!
Freedom!
Trailer Park Show!
Ten-four on the Trailer Park Show. And we're gonna do everything we can at the Trailer Park to get Mike Hanson elected.
Yes, sir, we are.
Next County Commissioner, Precinct Four, will be Mike Hanson.
Freedom!
Ten-four. Sarah, thank you for your service to our country.
He is a real patriot, this guy right here.
Ten-four, most of them are.
A lot of people waving the flag, this guy's done it way before people waving these flags right now.
Shut up or you're gonna put in jail.
Uh-oh, there goes Saber One!
We miss you so much.
Hello! Hold on here, hold on here! Hold on here, I gotta get in here!
No, she wouldn't do it.
I think she would, I think she would.
She wouldn't do it.
Well, take it in your hand and do it!
Oh, what the hell!
Do the camera!
Oh, it's flashy! Of course, I'm voting here, yeah! Yeah, whether they lock it or not, I'm voting here. Precinct, Precinct Convention, County Convention, State Convention. We saw you last time at State Convention. It's very important that you do more of your vote, folks, and you gotta get out to your Precinct Convention, and you gotta go to your County Convention. And go ahead and go to your State Convention! Do it! Don't say a "how," get up, get up, you're fucking good! Delegate from Travis County to last State Convention! They're trying to get rid of our guns! Get on and do it, folks!
Come on, and I wanna hear more of this Powerman Live Land Group, this is incredible! These folks are rocking out tonight, I love their music! They'll need to inject some of this music into David Rockefeller's head, and then he'd stop trying to kill all of the entire population. See, that's the problem with the New World Order, they're a bunch of scum, they're afraid of everybody, they hate us having a good time, they hate us owning property, and being able to live our lives, and raise our children, and defend ourselves, but they're gonna be defeated, guaranteed! Death to the New World Order! We shall prevail! Alright, back to the rock and roll, baby!